Good evening and welcome to the Board of Commissioners' work session for October 4th, 2021. Ms. Cuthbertson, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Demilio.
Here.
Commissioner Aliva.
Here.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Here.
Commissioner Siegel.
Here.
Commissioner McCabe.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Commissioner Wexler.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here. Chief Ayala, could you please lead us in the pledge?
Let's lead us to the flag. To the Republic, which stands one nation.
Before we get started tonight, I'd just like to thank everybody in the township staff, the Police Department, Fire Department, Public Works, and all the volunteers who contributed to Haveford Township Day. It was a great day. The weather was wonderful. It was really great to see everybody out there, an indication that while the pandemic persists, that things have improved after missing it last year. First item on the agenda is a presentation by the EAC, Mr. Noel Smith.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having this topic tonight. And I'm going to talk tonight about the action plan. This is a high-level summary. There's a document that really fills in a lot of details around this. I think I have about 15 minutes. I'll try to finish in 10, allow for Q and A at the end. I do want to point out that the work that's in here is largely from Jada Ackley. Jada is a representative from the PA Department of Environmental Protection. She's put a lot of work into that with a lot of information and feedback from the EAC. So, high level, we're going to talk about climate realities. We'll breeze it up pretty quickly. I'm pretty sure this group has a pretty good understanding of what's at stake. Talk about our progress and goals and really spend time on the future, what this plan kind of lays out, and answer any questions. This slide really talks about temperature and carbon dioxide, or greenhouse gas emissions have gone up in concert together. Much of the science around this is settled and the models have predicted this for a long time now and continue. So, we have a pretty good handle scientifically of what causes this and where it's going and what actions are needed to mitigate that. How has it impacted us locally past the present? So, the average temperature in Pennsylvania is currently almost two degrees Fahrenheit higher due to the greenhouse gas emissions of the last century. Between 1958 and 2010, we've experienced a 70% increase in precipitation due to heavy rain events. I think we've all kind of witnessed that and see that, and Lyme disease has tripled in the last decade in our region. So, what do we expect in the future? More precipitation. So, as the world warms, the climate holds more moisture, and that moisture gets dumped on us. And you can see the picture on the right shows an impact most recently to the Vine Street Expressway. We also had impacts to our water systems recently. They were put on low usage for a period of time due to too much water from a rain event that happened a few weeks ago. We're expected to continue to warm another five degrees Fahrenheit by 2050. Couple of things that maybe aren't as apparent. You talk about sea level rise. Our airport is at risk due to the Delaware River and the tidal flow of that. New Jersey Shore property values are also at risk. There's a lot of folks in our community that own property, and a lot of their wealth is tied up into property at the New Jersey Shore. And then we talked about the invasive species and pest risk due to really the warming of the planet and species moving northward. This is just an impact map of Philadelphia Airport in 2100. It pretty much becomes part of the Delaware River. You know, you can see the green areas are low-lying areas, which will flood with every high tide, and the blue is pretty much the Delaware River. Same thing with the Jersey Shore, 2100. Again, this is with about four feet sea level rise. The shore becomes non-viable at some point in our lifetime. When mortgages get too risky for banks to issue mortgages, that property value will be impacted. You can't get mortgages. The values plummet. So, again, one of the impacts that you will see in our lifetime. So, some of the compound negative impacts. Water, warmer average temperatures impacts the air quality, so more respiratory illness, more mold and allergy causing pollen from the warmer and wetter, and more vector-borne disease. The economy, our infrastructure is being impacted today. I'm a civil engineer or was at one time. You know, we design everything based on history. So, you know, rain events from the past determine how we built things in the present. The past is no longer a reflection of the future. So, we've, all of our infrastructure was built with the assumptions of the past, and so they're all changing now. So, there will be impacts to our infrastructure, public and private. The New Jersey Shore, we talked about, and PennDOT talks about, you know, the issues that they've had over the, within 2018 alone, an extra $125 million for infrastructure replacement due to climate change. And, you know, we were talking about billion-dollar incidents over regions due to these events. So, Haveford Township's done a lot over the course of the last 15, 20 years in terms of understanding and taking action on this problem. Our first climate action plan was in 2005. In 2009, you approved a greenhouse gas reduction plan and achieved that in 2018. So, good work on that. And the progress continues with a 55% reduction projection in the sector due to the transition to nuclear energy. So, we've committed to 100% clean energy by 2035, and 100% for, again, that's for electricity, and then everything else by 2050. The everything else is probably a little harder as far as home heating. We've partnered with the EAC workshop, you know, this action series with the Sierra Club and Ready for 100. So, we've done a lot of education programs throughout the community, and we've got the solar project that's going on now. So, really, a lot of great work has been done. But I guess I'll just kind of couch that with, well, where do we stand and what does that mean? You know, the problem is really big. We're taking things at the municipal level and handling it. But if you look at where the township stands as a whole, most of our greenhouse gas emissions come from the residential homes, and then transportation, and then commercial energy and solid waste. So, residential energy is almost half, and then another half with transportation, commercial energy, and solid waste. So, really, there's kind of the big levers that we've got to figure out how to influence not just the municipal operations, but the rest of the community. So, we need widespread involvement to get this done. So, the action plan I'm going to go through is a lot of bullets here. There's a lot of detail behind all these in the actual document. So, we're talking, we go through in the order that we just talked about, right? Like, what are the biggest nuts to target? So, the first one was residential energy. So, how do we get all of our homes to go into, I guess, zero, net zero? So, we talk about a Green Point system, a Green Point system at a high level for new building permits. They would get certain points based on certain requirements for, you know, efficiency, renewable energy, things of that nature, and it would then reduce their building permit costs. So, that's what the Green Point system would be. Energy consumption outreach and education. We've started some of that now. We need to continue that. Weatherization programs and expand the residential tree canopy. And that's a really important one. I've been in Westgate Hills for like 27, 28 years now, and our canopy is, you know, we have the oak trees, and they were diseased, and they're getting cut down, and they're not being replaced. So, when I moved there, you know, Glengarry Road had these towering oak trees that really covered the neighborhood, cooled the neighborhood. As the planet warms, the air gets warmer, these trees are important to keep our communities cool, to give us cooler air, to clean the air. So, really count, you know. Anyway, the tree canopy is a kind of important mitigation strategy for us or adaptation. Increased participation in residential renewable energy. We talk about setting goals as a community and measuring those goals and using that to drive some action with our community. Increase outreach for programs like Solarized Delco. And then transportation, the goal is to increase the number of electric vehicles registered by 2035 through education and expanding the EV charging infrastructure, and similarly decreasing gasoline diesel usage by 30% by that same period through soft infrastructure. So, allowing people to do things like, or encouraging businesses to allow folks to work from home, or carpooling and things like that, and then hard infrastructures like bike lanes and public transit. Replacing all township vehicles with no emission vehicles is part of the plan. We're already starting to do that, so great job on that. We need to continue as we rotate vehicles out, look for zero emission vehicle replacements. Commercial energy is looking at building codes and outreach. Waste is, the plan is to, or the goal is 20% reduction by 2035. We have to really rethink our waste program to do that. And I say rethink it, rethink how we promote recycling and composting, how the county handles their waste, whether they burn it, landfill it, or really go for a zero-waste program. And we spoke about that a number of months ago, and thanks for the support on influencing the county to do the right thing in that level. And then metrics for transparency so that we all, as a community, understand where our recycles are going, where trash is going, and what's happening to it. So, again, rethinking how we do that is on the docket. And then water and wastewater management, expanding our green infrastructure for stormwater. The, you know, we have the rain garden program. Investigate other means like green roofs. Permeable surfaces is a big thing, right? So, as we give out permits for homes to expand impermeable surfaces, so give them incentives to put permeable surfaces so we don't get more runoff. And, yep, so there's benefits. So, they'll save us money and boost our local economy. Again, reduction in energy costs, make this a more livable community, or continue to make it a livable community. And that's what I talked about, like the tree canopy and other things will help to do that with cleaner air, cooler air. Yep, and the rain gardens we talked about as well. So, anyway, that's the plan. And again, this is a living document. It's not meant to just sit and not be updated. We'll continue to revisit this as we go through this. So, I'll pause there for any questions.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I honestly didn't recognize you.
Well, yeah. I got my mask on, so.
Anyway, thank you for doing this. Very important. Let me ask you a question. I was looking at the slide. Do you, does your group take into account like infrastructure needs, like Steve, like Philadelphia? I understand. I mean, not that I disagree with temperatures rising and sea levels rising. Don't they have to maintain some of this? Is it going to get worse because the cities and towns are not maintaining infrastructure like that?
Yeah. So, it's a good question. Like, how much can we influence others to do that? So, first point about the infrastructure I mentioned earlier, everything that's built today, the whole built environment, is specked on a climate that we had in the past, which is not the climate that we have in the future. So, that's going to impact all of our infrastructure like that. And the Vine Street Expressway and our water system are just two examples of that. City of Philadelphia is also working on their plan, and we're one of, I think, 2,500 communities that have put together kind of a local climate action plan. So, the things that we do are important. Some of them are important, like for our community to make it more livable, bike pathways, the tree canopy, the green infrastructure with the rain gardens, certain things that we can do to directly impact us. But there's other things that we do and all the communities have to do together to make the impact at the global scale, because this is a global problem. So, just us reducing and everybody reducing the use of greenhouse gases is going to help make the problem not as bad as it's going to be, because we know it's going to be bad, because we have to move fast. But the more that we can do as a community, as a society, to reduce all of our carbon emissions will make the problem worse in the future. So, I hope that answers your question, Steve. But the answer is, Philadelphia has got their own plan that is, I think, similar to this in terms of its scope.
Green roofs and solar panels, are they compatible? And can you have a, that has both solar panels and?
I think you're probably looking at one or the other, yeah, in general, because, you know, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, maybe a roof that is not a fit for solar because of shading might be a good fit for a green roof to, you know. And again, a green roof is you would have some kind of vegetation on the roof, and that cools the building. So, it, you know, so the heat coming in, it actually insulates it as well, keeps it warmer and cooler depending on, you know, the season, and also less runoff, because it captures some of the rain.
If I could just ask you about some of the specific actions that you want the township to take. I start with, I guess, back of the document. Climate equity. We have an environmental justice assessment we're going to create with a monitoring plan where we hire a sustainability manager. What are the other specific things that this plan calls for the township to undertake right now specifically, whether it's hiring somebody, imposing restrictions on builders, or something like that?
Yeah. I mean, you mentioned that there was a recommendation to hire a sustainability coordinator. There's a lot of work in here that would have to be accomplished and tracked and done. So, the hiring of an individual to track that would be one key recommendation to do that. Much of the other ones are captured in these bullets that are here. It's really managing that plan. But there is, there are changes to our codes that we recommend in this document, and some of those are in relation to impermeable surfaces, weatherization of homes, efficiency of the, you know, the systems that are heating and cooling the homes, things of that nature.
Is there a set of model ordinances that you folks have uncovered or that are successful in other areas that you're going to recommend that we consider and adopt?
We will absolutely be using model ordinances and not just making them up. Yeah, absolutely. There's resources that we have available to kind of borrow from, you know, the model for efficiency, let's say, or impermeable surfaces, and then learning from what other local communities have done in that area as well.
Are there examples of other communities in Pennsylvania that have, you know, taken an aggressive stand here and seen some progress?
Yeah. Well, just from my own personal knowledge, I haven't researched the answer to that for all the communities in Pennsylvania. But, so the answer is yes, some have. I would primarily say, like, Philadelphia and Pittsburgh have pretty, really aggressive plans for their climate action. Some of them are so aggressive, I wonder if they could do those things, you know. So, yeah, I think we're in line with some of the major cities. And I'll even say New York City is another one that has a really aggressive climate action plan that is probably more aggressive than this as well. So, I can't speak to a lot of the other municipalities. I can do that research, but I know the major metropolis areas in the Northeast have done this.
Have any states taken it on as far as, taken it on as far as you know?
There, well, I believe there's a fairly general action plan at the state level, but not to this detail in Pennsylvania. But I don't know the answer if other states have holistic plans for their entire state. Yeah. It's a good question, though, because, you know, this is not a problem that we can solve on our own, right?
Right. I mean, one of the things we deal with as a community is if we impose, we have to deal with the issue of this is the right thing to do. At the same time, if our neighboring communities aren't doing it, we're just making our place more expensive to develop in or more expensive.
I would argue we make our community more attractive to live in when we do these things, you know. We will attract people that, you know, want to be in a community that leads and makes a livable community and is taking actions to do it. So, I know it looks like an expense, but it also increases.
Do Philadelphia and Pittsburgh already employ sustainability experts?
They do.
In their sea level offices?
Yeah. There's a chief sustainability officer in the city of Philadelphia and a staff. Generally, the sustainability, Delaware County recently hired a sustainability lead as well. Started, I think, about a year ago, maybe she started. Again, started a program from scratch, and I think she's got maybe one intern now. But typically, for an operation like this, like, you wouldn't, I don't want to make, probably won't need to hire a staff. You'll need to hire an individual, because sustainability cuts across, like, all of operations, right? And you're probably looking at, you know, investing in an individual to manage.
This person would end up, I mean, this person would have suggestions for planning. This person would have suggestions for zoning, suggestions.
That's right.
In the Public Works Department, our own operation.
Yep. And a lot of it's metric tracking, right? So, there's a lot of metrics that we talked about in here, and we're going to have to track all of those, and it's going to be someone's job to kind of measure how we're doing and adjust plans as we go.
Is there anything right now that you recommend that township stop doing or prohibit, you know, that's just really having a disastrous effect and we just don't recognize?
Yes. I think our trash is an area, oh, it's not the highest impact, but it's an area that I think we can improve. There's some low-hanging fruit to improve how we handle our waste. And I base that off of observation mostly. I walk the neighborhood a lot, and I see what people throw out, and I see what's managed and not, and I know how much it costs. And I know if I put out one can, I pay the same as someone puts out 20 cans a week. And so, I just think there's ways to rethink that to incent different behavior so that it's more, I guess we call it more equitable, but also smarter in terms of material recovery. So, I think we make it really convenient and easy for people to throw stuff out and not worry about it. I think if we provided more transparency into what it is, where it's going, how much it costs, and make people pay their fair share to incent the right behaviors. But that's just one, like, I call that low-hanging fruit because I think we could put, there's programs in place that address things like that. And I think we're doing the right thing around incenting, you know, like, moving our facilities to be more energy efficient, really important. But as you saw in the, like, what we need to do, like residential and transportation are kind of big ones for us, and harder for us to change as a, you know, as a municipality. But the things that we can directly influence is, you know, the trash, our municipal operations, you know, providing community awareness and metrics and things like that.
I know there's a private composting program that's starting to make, have a pretty good presence in Haveford. My wife and I do it. Is that, is that something that we ought to do at the township level as opposed to just relying on?
Yeah. It's a good question. And.
I think an alien just landed.
Is that Joe Selia?
I would say yes. I think.
Well, that's how we're going to get rid of our trash, you know, in that Great Bugs Bunny, right, with Mortimer J. Frog, you know, and they have them in the time capsule?
Yeah. Composting is huge. I think, I don't have the exact number, but a fairly substantial percentage of our waste is compostable. And I compost at home as well. It works awesome. It all ends up in my gardens, and I have, I had the most tomatoes this year than I ever had, mostly from the feeding from the, you know, the stuff I made at home. So, it's part of its education, part of its, if we rethink how we charge for trash and recyclables and compostables, we can incent people to do the right behavior, you know, the right environmental behavior. So, again, because we make it, we make it almost free to make, you know, to just throw everything away and burn it.
No, I understand. There's absolutely no marginal cost.
Right.
It's throwing away 50 cubic feet of trash a week.
Yeah.
And I get that.
Yep. So, if we make that more expensive and make the compostable pickup, you know, more attractive to cut down the other costs, people will, so I think there's ways to rethink it and do that. But compost is huge. Material recovery is huge. I see so many things thrown out that shouldn't be thrown out, that could be reused, or even just the materials recovered. But again, there's ways to do that, but it's hard work, and you have to rethink it all. And, you know, doesn't mean we shouldn't do it.
Mr. President, am I remembering correctly that we had a presentation recently about needing to update our ordinances to allow composting? We have.
There's, yes, it's in the works.
Yes, it is in.
Thanks. That's all I have.
The Green Point system is something that other communities.
Yeah. Yeah, we didn't make that up. It was borrowed from, again, those best practices that are out there.
That would be, I mean, one of the things we're in the process of updating our municipal plan, and from that would be starting to look at zoning and building codes. So, that might be something that we should be considering in the future there.
Yeah, I think so. Absolutely. Yeah.
You have estimated costs throughout the document in terms of the objectives, but do you have a summary of what those costs would be and throughout what year, what that would look like?
I do not. No.
Okay. It might be good to be able to see it in its entirety versus just by project so that we could take a look at it.
The alternative is a lot more expensive. So, yes. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Very impressive work. Thank you.
Are there any commissioner committee updates? Chief Ayala, can you be, prime update?
Thank you, Commissioner. The chief report for the Haveford Police Department for September of 21. We have 14 criminal arrests, 247 traffic citations were issued, seven non-traffic citations, 58 written warnings, and 302 parking tickets. We had one aggravated assault, one sex offense. Aggravated assault in Unit Block of West Chester Pike was a boyfriend-girlfriend issue, and the actor-boyfriend was arrested with that incident. Had a sexual assault at Haveford College. A female reports she was sexually assaulted in the morning of 9:12:21, and that's being investigated as we speak. Motor vehicle theft from U-Haul, which is a pretty common occurrence down there, and it was recovered by Chester Township Police. Theft from autos, Lorraine Street, Leonard Country Club, Ivy Rock, St. Mary's, St. Mary's, Ivy Rock, Claymore, 600 Block Ashurst, Leonard Country Club, again, 700 Block East, Pinnoah, and 2,500 Block of County Line Road, and that was a license plate removed from the vehicle. We had a bicycle theft at the middle school. Havertown Bicycle Shop had a bicycle theft during the day. The officers caught the person down behind Chatham Park School, and he was arrested. And another bike was stolen from Sacred Heart. K-9 usage, 2616 Harding Avenue, assist Marple PD. Property check, looking for a possible robbery suspect. Middle Town Road in Baltimore Pike, assist Pennsylvania State Police. Narcotics stiffed during a traffic stop. K-9 bar to the right rear as well as the rear seam of the vehicle. 2100 Grassland Road, Grassland Park, park check. Three males were caught smoking pot in the park during the night. 718 Winchester Road, assist Marple PD with another search for weapons at a resident. That's my report, Commissioners.
Any more catalytic converter?
No, not this month.
Anything that you can report on that comfortably, Chief?
As far as what, the catalytic converters?
As far as the catalytic converters.
Well, I think as I spoke to you before about that, it is a huge issue throughout the region, and there is a task force between all the surrounding police departments working on it. But they, we have multiple pictures of actors going in the car, climbing under cars, but they're always hooded. They always have masks on, and you can never see the license plate of the vehicle. That's what the problem is. But they have made multiple arrests, but just like the vehicles being entered, somebody else realizes there's money in these things, and they hit them. That the certain foreign cars are worth, their catalytic converters are worth more money because of the minerals that are in them. So, you'll see more vehicles from overseas are targeted than American-made vehicles.
And Chief, has there been any luck on the lights, the traffic lights or anything?
Funny you should mention that.
Yes, there has been. So, after our last meeting, I had spoke to Brian, say that word for me, Kevini? Kevini, from Panoni Associates. He is, Panoni has been hired by PennDOT, and they've been involved in this project from the beginning, and Brian has been the in-between guy working for PennDOT with the multiple contractors. So, after the meeting, our Commissioners' meeting, we had a conference call with myself and Larry Gentile from Marple Township. They're having the same issue up there. It affects all of our traffic lights up and down the Pike. So, September 27th, Panoni's been working with PennDOT and Rhythm to get it situated. So, Brian sent an email to PennDOT on the 27th. So Brian sent an email to Pendot on the 27th. We also had a conference call on that. So on October 1st, well, I got a email from Richard Cole, who is from Rhythm Associates. He listed the issues that we've been complaining about for two years now. And surprisingly in that, it was the same things over and over again, we found that there've been multiple cameras that haven't been working. We have no knowledge of that, we have no way of checking that. And this is what we've been complaining about. It seems that when we start really raising K, they look at it and say, oh, this one's offline, they have to be turned back on again. Well, we don't know why they're off and we don't turn them off, we don't know how. And in that email, he suggests that they have an online learning app that we can learn how to fix the traffic lights and see what the problem is. So needless to say, that kind of concerned me a little bit. So I sent him an email today, give me a minute and I'll read the whole thing to you. So Richard, thank you for your response. In reading your suggested solutions, I see that some cameras are not online. Only after repeated complaints are aware of this. How does, how is this system being monitored and why are some of these cameras still going offline after close to two years? As police officers, one of our many, many jobs is managing traffic, not learning how to diagnose signal repairs. I will be attending Commissioners' meeting tonight and expect to be questioned again on the progress of the repairs, which I still have no direct answers on why this system has been problematic from the onset. Next Tuesday, October 12th, is a regular Commissioners' meeting. I invite you and another representative to explain what has happened, how will we repair, how long it will take. So, and I said I will notify our Commissioners tonight that I have invited a representative, your representative and a, and a representative from Pendot to attend the meeting and explain.
So, so I understand this, all right. Let me understand this.
Go ahead. You won't be able to, Commissioner.
I'm sorry?
I said you'll have a difficult time understanding it because.
Okay, so how is it that Pendot does not recognize? What do we have to do? Are we, so Marple and, we're, Marple and Havreford having a problem?
Yes, that's correct.
Are we the only ones in the state that are having problems? I mean.
Dave, you want to jump into this with me?
No, I mean, listen, you know, what do we need to do to prove to them that this isn't working? What do we?
Well, Paul Lutz has recently changed positions in Pendot. He's a former local resident. He works very well with us. He, he knows the concerns and understands the concerns we have with this system. And I expect, and he's been on top of this since he's been involved in it. In the beginning, he was, had a different position, he wasn't involved in the installation or the operation or the repairs, but he has really been hammering that we, we have to have answers.
All right, so the bottom line is still not fixed.
That's the bottom line.
So it's, ladies and gentlemen.
All we get is patience.
They've used West Chester Pike in that area and from the Blue Route, how far down?
Well.
Of course, I know it's into Mariota.
No, no, it's, I just came up West Chester Pike earlier today and stopped at every traffic light going up.
They, when they go and check the systems, they tell us they're operating correctly. But if we sit and monitor them, we can see they're out of sync. I don't know what's, because they can look at the, they're in Kansas, this company, so they look at these things in Kansas. When they look, I don't know what they see because physically we see what's going on and they said there's nothing wrong with the system, it's operating properly.
You think, you think they understand the difference in time zones?
Dave, you got anything to add here?
I, I share everybody's frustration. We, we put it in the triangle, we vetted it for two years before we even gave any consideration to West Chester Pike.
Explain the triangle, what the triangle is.
The triangle being Township Line Landsdowne Avenue and West Chester Pike. We didn't jump into this thing willy-nilly quickly. We put it in at 202 and Route 1, one of the toughest intersections in Delaware County, and it worked on day one and it worked fabulously. And, and I, nobody's more frustrated than me with the fact that, I, I live at Steel and Nailers, I mean, I, I live a thousand yards from there. Frustrating intersection. Minnow and Eagle, I mean Eagle and West Chester Pike on a Saturday is crazy. So, so Dave, what do you think it is? What is, is it, is it computer issues? I mean, is it a mechanical or technical? I suspect, and, and, and look, I don't want to, I don't want to throw Pendot under the bus, but. Oh, please don't. Most of those other systems were installed by municipalities and, and Chief, I'll tell you, there was a lot of attention paid to synchronizing the triangle. And that's just three adaptive cameras, but, but we were very, and we worked the chief's staff every day to synchronize that. The attention that was needed to synchronize that, I believe, was never given to synchronize both rhythm systems. One installed by a developer, Marple, and one installed by Pendot and Havreford. And without putting that care and attention into the initial synchronization, I feel like we've been chasing it ever since.
And, and the triangles, we call it, the West Chester Pike Township Line and Darby Road, I gotta say, it works flawlessly. And when you sit down there, it's not the usual, you know, lanes going, you can watch it, so you'd be sitting here, expect the light to change for you, you're the only one sitting on the left turn. It lets the flow of the traffic that's backed up flow first. And you could sit there and just, it's amazing the way it works.
And 202 and Route 1, 202 and Route 1, that system went in, that's when we made the recommendation.
King of Prussia also, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll give you another one. City Line Avenue from Havreford through the city, through Lower Marion on the, on the town, on the line of City Line Avenue, that system went in, that system went in before the, before we even put the one in the West Chester Pike and Route 3, so.
Would it be in the Twilight Zone?
I, I think, I honestly think, and again, I don't, I don't, look, Pendot will hopefully be, they're, they're going to try to help us fix it, but I just feel like it got implemented behind the eight ball in terms of synchronization and now we're paying catch-up and trying to, trying to fall back and, and get it synchronized properly. And it's a very detailed synchronization, even, even the one on City Line. We'll go out of step every once in a while. So, so why doesn't Pendot recognize, they're not bogged down with, with, if it's working everywhere else, they can't be bogged down. I mean, they have to look at this seriously.
Are they, are they different systems between, are they different manufacturers?
No, they're the same manufacturer and they have a different camera to actually monitor. One's, one takes advantage of radar a little bit more than the other.
And the radar's the one we see. The radars will only have issues with, because they have replaced heads.
I don't think it's a radar issue. Again, I, and I could be wrong, I think it's a synchronization issue from day one. We're having the same issue we had last month.
That's correct.
So we've asked for somebody, somebody, I, I'm still not sure, is the who needs to do what? Is it Pendot needs to fix something or we need to, I mean, it sounds like the contractor. So who do we push to get this?
Well, I would suggest, my email.
It doesn't seem like anybody's willing to step up.
I would hope my email holds a little bit of weight, but I would suggest it comes from a township manager inviting them next week.
But we did do that.
What's that?
I thought last meeting, didn't we, Mr. President, ask for?
No, I said, I said I would, I would follow up with them to see.
Oh, I thought we asked the township manager to follow up with.
No, we, we worked, we worked in conjunction, but I'd say, having a representative from either Pendot or.
Are you going to talk to our state representatives?
Pardon me?
Are you going to solicit the help of our state representatives?
I, I don't think that's really where, where that is right now. Dave, what do you think?
I, I think the biggest, look, Pendot put the system in. I think the place to push is Pendot. They paid for it, they put it in.
Let's have them hope and have them push Pendot.
That's, and that's what, that's what Chief's talking about. Again, I feel like, I feel like we're coming a little bit from, from behind the eight ball. We, we, we took two steps backwards to get one step forward. Every time we clean up the Dunkin' Donuts and Glenn Larry pops up. I mean, it's, it's, it's frustra, look, I, again, I share you guys frustration, but I think the place to keep the emphasis is with Pendot. If Pendot's not buy, if Pendot doesn't buy in on any of it, then, then we're, then we're done. We need Pendot to take ownership of it.
They were out on Steel and West Chester Pike today working on it.
Who is, what, what did you?
The contractor, he's got a black picture.
Black truck. He, he's, he's, he's the person that does the timing. He's a local, like Tony, whatever his last name is, but he's there all the time. But you're, you work with multiple contractors, it, it is a problem and I wish I could give you an answer, but I, I live it every day, dealing with, with the complaints, looking at the traffic in the morning, in the afternoon. This afternoon at four o'clock, eastbound West Chester Pike was backed up from Glendale Road into Marple Township, coming off of 476 across the line, West Chester Pike block. Coming out of Nailers Run Road, when the light changes, it's so out of sync now, it blocks West Chester Pike again.
And, and that's a safety issue because.
It certainly is.
Kindred Hospital there, which I know gets dispatched a lot for EMS, you know, transport or whatever, I, it happens a lot. I mean, that, you're clogging up that area where, where ambulances run up and down that Pike.
Yes, Commissioner.
It's a safety issue, it really is a safety.
I agree.
Because it really gets jammed, I've seen it, it's jammed.
Yep.
I mean, everything's jammed, West Chester Pike and 476.
Yes.
Because you can't even get on 476 South if you're coming east.
I, I think we saw some relief during the pandemic where nobody was driving.
Right.
And it seemed to be working fine, but there was no traffic. Now everybody's back to work and we're really seeing it big time.
Exactly, now you're seeing it.
Right. So I think the problem was there all along, we just didn't see it because there was no traffic.
I get it, I, I agree, I tell you. And then, and then post pandemic, I guess, I don't know if you call it post pandemic, but the rates, the traffic volumes are up everywhere.
Yeah.
It's, it, trust me, we're not, we're not seeing new, more volumes just here. They're all, they're up everywhere. Public transportation usage is way down, traffic volume is way up. So I, I, I think you're right, I think that brings any sensitive area right to the top of being an issue.
Yeah, I'll, I'll call the state rep tomorrow, let's, Commissioner wants to do, maybe have more impact than I would, but I'll call him tomorrow and tell him what our problem is, ask him to.
I, I think he, Mr. President, can he say on behalf of the board, if the board agrees that?
Sure, I, I mean, I think one of the things we were, have an invitation for them to come next week is that.
Well, I'll, then I'll, I'll call the state rep tomorrow and tell them, share our emails and ask them to get somebody from Pendot here to kind of answer our questions a little bit.
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Yabba dabba doo.
Okay, next week on the agenda, the Finance Department, more settlement and stipulation. Like, we've been through this for the last many months. There's also an ordinance for the additions to the Historic Resource Survey. And before we go to that, Ms. Kirk, could you just let us know what responses you've gotten?
Sure. Very coincidentally, if you turn to ordinance P-14, I, the first four items, survey codes 1, 2, 7, and 9 are the ones that I have not received any formal response from, a few I have been in contact with but have not received acknowledgement forms. Items 10, 11, and 19 have all accepted, you know, inclusion and are in favor. And items 23, 24, 40, 57, and 81 have elected to be in opposition of inclusion on the survey. Now I do have, I was in contact with SEPDOT today about survey code, proposed survey code number one, and they will be giving me, they are, are planning to give me a final decision on whether they are in support or opposed to their inclusion by the regular meeting next week.
And was there ever, Havreford College, did they ever give a reason why they didn't want to be included or they just?
Um, they, they did not give me a reason. I, I know they said they were going to reach out directly to the Historical Commission and discuss it with them. They, they do have multiple other properties on the survey, so this is kind of surprising to me that Havreford College chose to, you know, be, be opposed to the inclusion of this specific building, but, but I don't know.
Thank you. Discussion, I'm sure there's some.
Just from a numbers perspective, so in totality of the 12, five have elected not to participate, four have elected to not answer, and three have elected to participate.
That's correct.
I don't think I've been shy about my opposition to any effort to impose this designation on any private homeowner who chooses not to accept the privilege. So obviously that's a conversation we'll have when we actually consider the ordinance next week. But I have been concerned about historic preservation since we first debated this ordinance several terms ago. And unfortunately, this, this effort right now to update the survey, including over the objections of, of private homeowners, concerns me greatly.
Okay, we'll be speaking more about that next week then. Ordinance number P-18, 2021 is an amendment to cell tower lease. I think we discussed that at the last meeting, this is second reading. Ordinance number P-19, 2021 is a traffic ordinance, the first reading. Any comments? And then resolution number 2233, 2021, Havreford Township, Delco Greenways Grant Round Two. Ms. Scott, first.
This is a request from the Park and Recs Department to make a grant application to Delaware County Greenways as stated, and this is a $100,000 grant request with no match and it essentially would allow us to have an open space plan pertaining to recreation, so a comprehensive plan geared on recreation.
And there's no match, you said?
Correct, no match.
Resolution number 2234, 2021 is a Keystone Grant Application, Library Renovation, right?
Yes, the library is taking the lead on this Keystone Grant as, as we took the lead on the Rackpee Grant, both going towards the library renovation project. This would be a $750,000 grant application and this resolution shows the board's support of that.
Any comments?
Madam Administrator, this is, this is not a matching grant, right? We do not have to spend around $750,000 or do we?
It is, but that shouldn't be an issue due to the size and scope of the renovation project, so there is a match, but, but like I said, that won't be an issue.
And we'll be waiting to hear the zoning board ruling on this Thursday. Resolution number 2235, 2021 is an amendment to our fee schedule following the shade tree ordinance that we passed, the updated one. I believe it's a $75 fee for a permit. It's actually probably a permit that for the most part people will not need. I think routine maintenance was, of shade trees was excluded from the ordinance, that one did not need a permit. There are a number of contracts and agreements, Havreford Township and Anthony J. Dunleavy Associates, the C.D. Action Plan.
That is just an annual, if I, if I may, that's an annual appointment that we do each year, appointing Dunleavy as the administrator of the CDBG program.
And I should mention, I say that out loud.
Community Development Block Grant Program.
Correct, correct. Which, just to take that a step further, that provides funds to lower-income residents to make improvements on their house for safety issues.
And I overlooked, there is also going to be a, go ahead.
It's probably worth, next week at our meeting, when we specifically address this, to go over that again. I think that is, is, is not widely known that that money is available. We will get calls from constituents sometimes who are worried about a neighbor, neighbors who've gotten very old, whose houses have gotten into disrepair. That program has provided, certainly in the sixth ward, help for people to fix roofs or do things that are otherwise make these houses dangerous or close to uninhabitable and not, not a lot of people are aware of it.
Right. And I'd be remiss if I didn't include that that program also includes funding for historic resource preservation, some public parks within the township too. So there's lots of public projects that benefit from those monies as well.
Thank you.
I did overlook, there was an addition, there will be a resolution next week on the Climate Action Plan Amendment that we, okay, that we had some, the presentation earlier this evening. Also a contract for the traffic signal maintenance contract. Is this?
That is a contract that we award every two years to obviously maintain the traffic signals throughout the township and we are at the end of that two-year award, so we'll be receiving bids, I believe they're due this week.
And this is not for the traffic signals that we've been talking about?
No, they're Pendot.
Separate signals.
Because maybe we do not want to renew that one, so. A contract for rehabilitation assistance?
Again, this, the same annual appointment, Dunleavy and Associates administer that, that is also part of the CDBG or Community Development Block Grant Program.
Thank you. Contract for preparation of all annual and evaluation reports under HUD regulations and the township of Havreford.
And that is also one part of the, these three contracts are all of the same origin, the Community Development Block Grant Program. the Community Development Block Grant Program. They're just three separate contracts that HUD, who administers it, has the township enter into.
Which has also been the agreement with Surrey Services.
Correct. Correct.
Professional Services Agreement with Keystone Municipal Services.
Sure. Earlier this year, we had a senior codes official retire, and Keystone was brought in to assist with code inspection and plan reviews that were this employee's area of expertise. So they are still staying with us while existing staff expands their own certifications, and we plan for long-term solutions.
Thank you. Any questions? And finally, purchases, replacement flooring at the Crick.
Just to add to this, this is flooring in the multi-use room and in the foyer area of the Crick, if you can picture that. It was included in the budget for 2021, so this is a planned project.
Thank you. Any, Commissioners have any comments?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
Can I ask our Finance Director if sometime between now and next Tuesday, if it would be possible for us to just get maybe a schedule from the Climate Action Plan, the, kind of the whole thing, like what, what all the things would cost over five years, and then to the extent that we project any kind of reduction in other costs or any kind of offsetting thing that comes from these, if it's possible to get?
We can definitely do that. I was on the committee that worked on this. So we can do something, but it just would be very general. And I guess just, I would like to preface any figures with that caveat.
Absolutely. And my, my, yeah, my point isn't to then do, if it's not X, we don't do it. If it is X, we do it. My plan is for us to just get an idea of, of if, if we do everything we're planning on doing, you know, what is it? Because I don't think it's much. You know what I mean? I think it's a great, I, I quickly looked at it and don't think this is a big investment.
And actually, Mr. Smith did a great job summarizing, but you can see, if you look at a lot of the points that were brought up, a lot of it is public outreach and education, which doesn't cost hardly anything.
And, and that will, and, and I think that's, I think that'll be important for the public when we see what we're talking about, a 25-page plan, we're talking about all the things. A lot of it is aspirational. A lot of it is example setting. A lot of it is data gathering, education. But, you know, taking on the full-time sustainability expert is a good idea. Let's find out what, you know, what do we project that will be. And then I did notice in looking at the plan that the, the idea that when you do that, it, it does result in other things and other reductions, who have some, some quantifiable, you know, amount for us to consider. So if it's possible, and with all the caveats in the world, that'd be great.
I can, I can put a summary together that would help with that.
And if there's nothing else, I can have a motion to adjourn. Second.
So moved.
Good night.